Okay, welcome everybody. We'll call the meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All on paper, say hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Notion carries. Ready, we read the minutes from our last meeting.
March fourth, twenty twenty four, Chairman Helgivale called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine AM. Members present were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Helgivale. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse, to approve the tentative agenda of motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of February twenty six, twenty twenty four, were read and approved. Approved claims per payment. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen to appoint Sabrina Beck to the Wright County Planning and Zoning Board, replacing Candy Fettland. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to refund assessment years twenty twenty and twenty twenty one to Claremont Country Club that were erroneously paid. Uh, motion by, motion carries. Cluse spoke with the county attorney prior to this meeting and he stated two years is the farthest back you can refund. This refund is for three point five acres for a total of two thousand fifty six dollars or two hundred fifty six dollars and fifty one cents. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse, to approve the precinct election officials' compensation from thirteen dollars per hour to fifteen dollars per hour and seventeen dollars per hour for the chairperson. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash ten. A resolution to establish fees for transfer of human remains by roll call vote, eyes, Cluse, Rasmussen, and Helgivale, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty four dash ten duly passes and reads as follows. And there you can see the full resolution in its entirety. In summary, it's six hundred dollars for basic service over the funeral director transporting to eight me back and then four hundred dollars for it in White County. Adam Clements, Wright County Engineer, presented Resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven, awarding a contract for Project FM dash CO ninety nine parentheses one oh four dash fifty five dash ninety nine. This will be for paving on C thirty two west of Goldfield to Highway seventeen and R thirty eight from C seventy south to Hamilton County line. The winning bid went to Blacktop Services and subsidiary for six hundred sixty seven thousand, two hundred forty eight dollars and eighty cents. By roll call vote, eyes, Cluse, Rasmussen, and Helgivale, nays, none. Resolution duly passes and reads as follows. And there you can see that full resolution. Clements gave an update on secondary roads. There were fifteen work orders completed last week. One of the work orders was helping conservation on a special project on the boat ramp that was washed away. Blades and trucks are continuing to pick up brush with four townships to be, to be completed. Crews started tile and covert work last week. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse, to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additional instructions? Not they will stand approved as read. Plans have been around. Open forum for the public. Anybody here like to address the board either here or on Zoom?
Do you have quick questions?
Yep.
First of all, I know the next item is important to everybody. Just use common sense. Remember there'll be five supervisors this fall. So workloads should be less. Uh, second thing, what's the situation on the streets of county or city? Like, what's the case? He's going out to the hospital. That rose, is that beard? Is he surfaced?
County K.
County K going?
Yes. From Casey's, the hospital was, uh, was that city or county?
It's half, half and half after the, uh, um, uh, house on the west side. So it goes half and half all the way out to two twentieth. So I think the city has gotten a grant from Midas and then we'll piggyback on that when we, uh, try to pave it too, so.
Is there a schedule for when?
I think it's in the fifth year right now or five-year construction program.
Five years from now?
Yep, yeah.
Ooh, okay. And then the renewal, renewal. Then practically, uh.
Renew nutrients.
Renew nutrients.
What's the status of that and who owns it?
Yeah, they, they now have new investors in the operation and hopefully will be back in operation in April of this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else for us?
What will they be doing?
Uh, similar, similar to what they've been doing along with, uh, they've broadened their business plan to include other recipes.
So instead of just chicken letter, it'll be other maneuvers.
Correct.
Will have different smells.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, item six is a timed event. And seven, we can receive the Wright County Sheriff's monthly revenue report, number eight. Okay. County car service and mileage was twenty nine hundred fifty one dollars and seventy two cents. County new and renewed weapons permits, six hundred and sixty dollars, copy fees of seventy one, total of three thousand six hundred eighty two dollars and seventy two cents.
Motion to approve.
Second, second. Any further discussion? All on paper, say hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, review and act on abatement order one, two, two, two for Claremont Country Club. We discussed this the last, uh, few weeks and came to decision last week and this is an abatement order for a dollar amount of two hundred fifty six dollars and fifty one cents to declare my country club for the erroneous taxes paid on the parcel that was in dispute.
Which is a portion of the sovereign lake bed.
Correct.
Recognized by the state of Iowa.
Yep. I would motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Did you see it, Dean?
Yeah.
I didn't.
Okay.
I didn't.
Any further discussion? All favor say hi.
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 Opposed, same side, motion carries.
Just sign underneath my name.
Okay.
Just an update, uh, blades and trucks finished up last week, um, picking up all the brush, uh, in all account and all the townships. All that was done, we completed twenty seven work orders. Um, so the guys are out there doing a lot of covert work and tile work and ditch work. Um, you can see that we did ten right away ditches, two tile, two covert and worked on one bridge. Uh, we did have six signs that um, E nine one one that we replaced for them and we charged them back. Uh, started our, or we got our secondary, second shipment of the two hundred tons of salt. Um, so we're still waiting on one hundred tons now and we're trying to find a place to put it, so. Um, we're probably gonna put it on an outer shed. I think we put a hundred of it at Belmont, so we'll probably go over and go and look at it. Uh, and then we also started our inventories. Uh, the guys are, when it's gonna be raining out and they can't go outside and blade or do anything like that, um, they're gonna do their inventories in their sheds, so from top to bottom, left to right.
Promise of right?
I hope so. If, if you wanna do a dance with me, I don't care. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, you are doing, uh, I got work orders on that. You're doing the zone, the flying of those in your spare time?
Yep. Marcus has got them all mapped out and when he has time, he'll run out and do those real quick.
Okay. I think you saw some of the pictures on some of them, Dean?
I did. I've got one to go out and look at and write some, uh, work requests up on.
For you that weren't here, we're, we're flying all the drainage districts, so you'll be able to actually go to your district and see it, so we can see if there's sloughing damage in that track and see what, over a course of time. And access when FEMA comes in, be an ideal, uh, reference for us.
They're also on the Wright County website under the auditor's office under drainage. Um, and you can find your drainage and see what it looks like. And so you can access it from home.
And it's just the open ditch. It's not anything with a tile. It's just open.
Open ditches.
Right. Now, if we see stuff, are we gonna put a GPS pin on it?
I don't think we can yet, because the GPS, it's, you have to stop the drone and then go. Um, so what I think Marcus is trying to do is if you see something that needs, you might fly back out to take pictures of it. Um, or if there's a request that comes in, um, we can go out, take pictures of that and then know exactly where.
Courtney, right now, when it comes in, Courtney's going through and watching the whole thing and then she can stop, take a screenshot of it. So that's what Dean's pictures are.
My intentions are to go out and walk it and then take a GPS hit, where the thing's at and write up a work request.
Okay. That'll be definitely a, a plus for.
Yeah.
And on the cost of that, it's the, the billing that has come in is a little bit ri- right at what Courtney had estimated to a little bit less, so that's a nice.
Yeah, they weren't high bills at all.
No, not bad.
Hey, we will be in recess for about five minutes. Okay, uh, nine fifteen. Changing the period. Review and act on Revolution twenty twenty four oh nine, accepting recommendations from Wright County Compensation Board. And they met, uh, oh, on December twentieth, two thousand twenty three, and made the following recommendations of salaries for the elected officials. They came, uh, across a three percent proposed increase across the board. Auditor would go from eighty five, one fifty to eighty seven, seven oh four. Uh, Wright County Attorney go from a hundred and fourteen, three ninety six to one seventeen, eight twenty eight. Wright County Recorder would go from eighty five, one fifty to eighty seven, seven oh four. Sheriff could go from one twenty seven, three seventy five to one thirty one, one ninety seven. Supervisors go from forty three, seven fifty three to forty five, oh six five. And Treasurer would go from eighty five, one fifty to eighty seven, seven oh four. And that was the recommendations from the Compensation Board that meant.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine.
Is our. Further discussions? Rick, how do you vote?
Hi.
Dean, how do you vote?
Hi.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We will be in recess until nine thirty. Okay, we are back in session, uh, for nine thirty. Open bids on drainage, brush, and tree control. We put that up to bid a few weeks ago, Courtney?
Yes.
And what was our outcome?
We had one bid that was submitted and it was submitted on time.
Okay.
Um, that bid was from Joey Hara, who has previously done our brush and weed control. He turned his bid in on the seventh. Open up that bid. All right. He did include estimates for both rotations for first and second year. Uh, rotation one for twenty twenty four is a total of forty seven thousand, two hundred dollars.
Said not to exceed price.
Yes.
If he does that.
Yep. And rotation two for year twenty twenty five, his estimate is forty seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, he has included his applicator license, which is good until twenty twenty six, uh, December thirty first of twenty twenty six. And.
That's a commercial license.
His applicator's license.
Yeah.
Um, he has also included his certificate of insurance um, with commercial, uh, general liability insurance. And that is good until nine twenty nine of twenty twenty four.
And many, many calls on it, or did you receive?
We had between four and six people call and ask questions on it or come in and get paperwork on it, but Joey was the only one that we received anything from. So we didn't even have anybody come in after the deadline on Friday at three, so.
Okay.
This was the only one.
We've used him in the past. I mean, he, he does good, I mean, he does decent work. Hey, when there's only one bid.
Brush, my man, we're doing this under, uh, not as supervisors, but as trustees of the drainage districts.
Right.
Good. I would make a motion to accept, uh, Julie Harris' bid for rotations one and two, years twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. As submitted.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All on paper, yes.
Can I make a comment on that?
Absolutely.
Uh, he has been doing a fantastic job. Cause I've been paying the bills when they come. There are no, used to be before the Harrows started doing it, there would be trees out there. And there are no, there might be some little ones, but they get them all. They drive our ditch. The one we got a mile ditch on one side and eighty rides on another one. And they even took some of the great big stuff out of there on the short one, so he's been doing a super job.
Yeah, since you've gotten these, done great, I think.
Super. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we can do old business, new business update on meeting, gentlemen.
I had no meetings. We'll be at ISAC Wednesday through Friday.
And we have, uh, at sixteen hundred, or at four o'clock this afternoon, we have, um, budgetary for. Budget hearing for the, uh, assessors budget.
Um, I had a meeting last week with a potential, uh, business for the industrial park and meeting with another, uh, uh, local business and put those two together and that worked out well, beginning stages, but you know, we're at that first step, so things are progressing there. Um, economic development meeting tomorrow at seven and then ISAC this weekend. I got a meeting at, uh, Wednesday at four thirty for the ISAC board.
I also met with, uh, Joseph Crowley from Invenergy on, uh, Wednesday. Uh, Invenergy is a company that has been signing, uh, easements with, um, with landowners in Wright, Hamilton, Webster. Uh, and I believe Humboldt, he told me, um, for a, uh, wind turbine, uh, project. Uh, I asked him the timeframe, uh, and he thought that it would be, um, probably ten years, yeah. Um, this guy, he is the senior analyst for renewable development, so I know that they did have some, uh, dinner on Wednesday evening, uh, which I was invited to, but I got, uh, sick that evening, so I didn't go, um, down at, uh, at Bridgewater's Conference Center, uh, and they also had a meeting over in, that was on Wednesday evening, on Tuesday, the evening prior, they had a dinner for, uh, those landowners that had signed up. I think it was informational meeting from what he told me. Uh, in Fort Dodge, uh, on Tuesday, so. I will keep you posted as I.
Ten years to start or ten years to finish a project in?
Um, I got the feeling that it was ten years before we would see anything happening. They are not seeking eminent domain.
I don't think landlords usually do. I think they just pay.
And they have not filed anything with, uh, I mean, they have to go through the Iowa Utility Board, but they haven't done any of that process, you know?
Okay.
The, uh, uh, professional building is coming right along. We'll wait, hold up as we're like fishing right now. Hopefully he'll get there this week. And he should easily have it done in April.
Perfect. Good. Okay, we have our next, the schedule is nine forty five. Bob Ritter to give update on signature of a petition. We'll be in recess for about ten minutes.
You know, right?
Okay, we'll be back in session. Item number eleven of Bob Ritter to give update on signatures for a petition on county ordinance or setbacks on the pipeline. Bob, the floor is yours.
Hey. First, uh, I want to thank you guys for all the work you've done on the right of way, uh, ordinances, the drainage ordinances and stuff, um. There, I think if it's done right, it'll help if it goes through. Jeremy, also for the, uh, zoning, planning board, uh, them, uh, I know they're still working on quite a few things here. The, uh, uh, I guess the first thing I want to do, I'm gonna have Jude read the, uh, this letter that came from PHMSMA to, uh, the CEO of Summit. And I just wanted to read just the rural part of it. Uh, I gave copies to you guys and do all of that.
Yeah, sure. I think you, he handed out copies. And this letter, like he said, is from PHMSA, uh, Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration. Uh, and this letter is dated last September of twenty three. And Dean, you.
I've read it.
You were there also at the PHMSA meeting, but this le- letter is addressed to Lee Blank, the CEO of Summit. And, um, and you also have a, good, uh.
And I believe it was filed, uh, on I U B docket.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And as you said, when you stood up at the PHMSA meeting and you told the PHMSA people, we need guidance. Cause there's just so much. But there is a part here, uh, in part of this letter, the role of local governments. PHMSA cannot prescribe the location or routing of a pipeline and cannot prohibit the construction of non-pipeline buildings in proximity to the pipeline. Local governments have traditionally exercised broad powers to regulate land use, including setback distances and property development. That includes development in the vicinity of the pipelines. Nothing in the federal pipeline safety law impinges on these traditional prerogatives of local or state government. So long as officials do not attempt to regulate the field of pipeline safety preempted by federal law. But we're just, we're still in the dark. It's, it's afraid and waiting on.
Well, PHMSMA has sent to the government agency, and I thought it would be out by now, and they said they would open a comment period on these new rules and stuff. So there should be something coming and at least all of us should be able to see in this comment period. But some of us are getting a little anxious, so.
Absolutely.
So. There's a lot of things gonna happen, I think, in the next sixty days here before we can get out and get to planting and stuff. But anyway, the, uh, any, the, uh, I think Julie started it, uh.
I did.
Okay, about a week and a half ago or so, which, uh, I'm gonna have her report on the signatures and it just kind of, uh, we had a few things laying around, so we haven't had a lot of time, but you can go ahead and say your.
I'm just gonna read, I guess, but we have a hundred and probably close to a hundred and ten signatures. We could have certainly had a lot more. There's a lot of people that.
Julie, before you start, will you just say who you are and stuff so that, cause not everybody.
My name is Julie Blade. Um, I've got affected landowners to self-acquiring in here. Um, but we've held a meeting probably, I don't know, several weeks ago, um, and had a great, a great turnout. There's just a lot of opposition, a lot of people that signed this, um, petition that mainly says, um, hazardous liquid pipelines present valid concerns to our public safety, expenses, and responsibilities to the county. Damage to our county roads, massive water consumption, among other concerns. Carbon pipelines are dangerous to our families, neighbors, animals, wildlife, and communities. We call on our county supervisors to pass a carbon pipeline zoning ordinance to protect Wright County. And I guess I just feel like, like a lot of us, our lives here and our livelihood are hanging in balance. And we've been waiting to hear about some possible ordinances. I know we've been talking about that every time we come to the meetings and we hear that it's being looked on in planning and zoning and just wondering what our status is. Are we just gonna kick the can down the road until it's too late? I'm just afraid. I don't, I don't wanna have to wish that we had done something after the I U B hands down their decision. Something that we didn't do that we could have done. And I'm, we're running out of time. So just kinda wondering what our status is and maybe there's other people that want to voice their opinions too, but, um, that's my concern.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Before, Jeremy, would you, uh, Jeremy Abus is, uh, the head of planning and zoning, um. Do you wanna?
At this time, in like Thursday, I have a meeting coming up here and which is not to act on, it's, it's on the agenda to talk about pipelines, but we have nothing to act on at that point. Until they decide that they wanna set setbacks, there's nothing. I mean, the board hasn't decided they wanna go ahead and, and put an ordinance and go back for hazardous pipelines.
The board.
Planning and zoning.
Your commission. So at that point, and I have a new member that's just coming on, this is their first meeting, so it is on the meeting minutes to talk about it on Thursday. Um, I, I can't act on anything. We have, I have nothing to act on at that point. They have to decide if they wanna move forward with it, would they?
We neither. Tell us yes or no.
But eventually, even, even, but even if they recommend it, it's still coming to the board's super.
Okay.
I mean, it's, they could, the board, my boards can recommend. At that point, we can adopt them, we can recommend. So I'm gonna, I'll put it in front, I'm gonna put in front of them and I can put your, um, your names, all the names on that in front of them on Thursday and let them decide if they want to move forward.
Do they have all the information of the dangers and?
Do we need to show up?
Do we, yeah, do we need to show up?
We do.
So we're not acting on any, uh, anything on Thursday. So it's a discussion. You're, you're more than welcome to come.
Have they been informed of the dangers?
All the information I've received has been passed on. Dean's, I.
I tried to, you know, to keep them informed. The big question is, is what is the setback?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is it a mile? Is it two miles? Is it seven hundred and fifty feet? That, that is the, the question.
Regardless of what you've said, I know we're, we're, will be soon. But I would think that we could find a middle ground or you could find.
I'm.
Something.
I'm open for a suggestion. I, that's, trust me, I'm, I've thought about this a lot.
Right. Um. There are many other counties that have passed ordinances.
Correct.
And can we look at some of those?
We have and I have passed those on to the planning and zoning. So.
What's the other standards in the other counties?
Uh.
What, what, they're not, they're not implicated by any means.
No, Cassuth County is, uh, I believe three thousand feet.
Yeah.
Um, Shelby County was, I believe a half mile. They had several different setbacks. Um, I was telling Bob that, uh, that the, the, I assume it's called a brief. The brief, uh, to the Eighth Circuit appellate court concerning Story County and Shelby County uh, was filed with the courts on, I believe on Sunday. It was probably due today, so, um, I just re- received it last night. Um, I haven't gotten through reading them all yet, but those arguments support setbacks. It supports the letter to Lee Blank from, uh, the PHMSA Administrator, um. But again, you know, I, I think that there needs to be a consensus from, uh, from the group, I guess, first of all, to the planning and zoning board. We think it should be this distance. So that they have something to go, okay, this is what the people want.
Sure.
This distance. Um, and then they would, uh, put that in writing and send it to us and, um, and I know how I would vote, um, but I am one of three, so, um.
Well, anything at this point is better than nothing. And if you want us to give you a number, I guess we can send you a fucking number. That's what you're waiting on. And if you want us to give you a number, I guess we can send a quick number, that's what you're waiting on. You know, I.
But the, the, this uh, this, FMSMA has made some new rules and they, they're in the process, but nobody's seen them yet. And that part I don't understand, because when they passed it out, I think you probably read it too, it was supposed to go for public comment. Well, then we would know what the rules were.
Right.
And I, I agree with you, if there was something in there that.
But the PMSA rules in accordance with that letter that was written to Lee Blank. Will not give setbacks, they say that that is not their jurisdiction. They say specifically in that letter, that that is local jurisdiction, it goes by our rules. Um so, so if it is upheld. If the decision against Story County and Shelby County is upheld. At the Eighth Circuit Court level, in other words, they say um you can't enforce those setbacks. Then I assume it would be appealed to the United States Supreme Court.
I know some people were gonna push for that if it goes through.
Right, um. So. I don't know. I still think that right is, right and is gonna win, I, you know, so um. I know that you all are.
We've been on in Des Moines too long to realize that I guess right.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak from personal experience on this whole situation, um few people know. Kind of what my experience has been with, with this pipeline fight in Cerro County, um I had a local politician attack my licensure. And attacked my community standing in my profession because of this fight at the state level. And not to mention, it wasn't a local, it was on the state level. So it was a state politician and a local politician that mentioned me by name. Because I've been fighting against this, because I'm fighting for the rights of the people in the area and and my own family's rights. So if you think right is going to win out, they are the ones that are controlling. All the legislation, the eminent domain legislations, if we don't do something here, there is not gonna be a legacy standard. Not at all, and they attacked me personally. So if you think that it's just gonna be whatever, it's not, it's not.
The, the two rulings right now are are dealing with this particular item of setbacks. So I really, I I tend to believe that if we were to pass something, we probably wouldn't get sued because you've got two cases pending at this point. It would kind of put us into a aspect where we have something in effect.
Yeah, cause there's three or four other counties that they're, they sued, but they put them on hold because this.
Cause of this one, so I don't, you know, I I don't know if we have to litigate this right away, I think they may be sitting waiting for this, these two cases to resolve. And then.
That is, that is their desire, their desire.
Anything within three thousand feet is gonna die if there were ruptures. Anything, anything within three thousand feet of that thing is gonna die, that's just.
So let's set it.
If that's what Hinkon County did, then, then take three thousand feet, start there, maybe the amendment is needed, go ahead, start at three thousand feet and go from there.
And Palo Alto County had a resolution, added a resolution. That their ordinances would be non-enforceable until um the whole issue has worked its way through the courts. Oh, I don't know if that makes that more defensible, defensible kind of. Set of ordinances.
Send that one more time.
Um Palo Alto County.
Yep.
Has added a resolution to their ordinances that they would not enforce the ordinances until um.
Everything. Oh, until it resolves in the court. Which isn't protecting, to keep Summit from suing them, saying if the court decides this, okay.
Which may not be a bad uh, a bad clause in that, cause at the end of the day, the the courts are gonna decide which way this is gonna go, but at least we can have our ducks in a row. Right.
You gotta have a legacy enough.
We do have navigator bloom study from South Dakota. Which sets um risk levels to distance, so.
Think he knew how big the pipeline is actually.
Right, yeah.
And we're just afraid with, with all navigator plants and with the poet plants, by the time. It gets to Wright County, our pipes are gonna be, they're gonna wanna put in thirty inch pipes with the, with the addition.
They'd have to refile. Whatever your easement says. That's, that's in the filings, they can't change that.
Oh, they can go up to twenty-four.
I don't think navigator is heading toward the right count, I think that that.
That's, that's correct, the, I, I assume that maybe the jewel plan would come. North along sixty-nine or in that way to join the pipeline, but it's going over uh from Hamilton County. East over into Hardy County and joining the pipeline there, which as Bob points out, uh. That potentially could increase the pipeline size in Wright County.
And the way I read it. The easement from eminent domain. Doesn't have a pipe size except for the twenty-four inch.
That's correct, it's up, I think.
If you do that, if you agree to any for. Those people that signed an easement, they could specify on there, and that's section C or whatever.
Appendix C.
Appendix C, yeah.
Well, that's the reason, no matter how much you hated the people or this thing. You should have always had everything in writing from day one. I've been accused of colluding with those, not yes, but we got a perfect example of. How they do business just a few weeks ago, when we got that letter from uh to the uh Snyder. And Associates, and Summit didn't even know what the bill was about, well. The guys at the top, the left hand and the right hands don't know what the people out here are doing, that's the reason. The rules you've set up for the drainage, that's my main concern. Is they gotta go two feet under, and I showed you that, the chief engineer for Wright County, Razoo. He showed me a picture, this is what it'll be like, we'll clear cut, but he shows a pipeline where they clear all the dirt away from it. Those sixteen inch tiles in my place are about two to, two feet to thirty inches. You dig a hole underneath them, they'll just fall in a pile, they're all cracked, but they're working great, they're about four feet deep or to the top in solid clay. And it it's, it's gonna be a mess. And that they, they haven't had anymore, D N R has not given them any more water permits. The uh, uh, there's a little change in philosophy on the new Green Deal stuff, it was uh some stuff on Sunday morning. The big windmills out on the east coast they were putting in. They canceled practically all of them, because the, they, somebody sat down with a pen and a calculator. If what the cost to do them, they don't have the equipment to do it right now. If you build a new ship, that's two point four million or twenty-four million, something like that, so many dollars an hour. The electricity would be two and a half times, well, if that's, if it's fifteen cents now, that's thirty-seven and a half cents it's gonna cost them. And all the politicians finally got on board and said, this ain't gonna work, we'll all be broke. Which we got bad times coming anyways, okay, thanks, guys.
I have um a question, is this, as Julie said, excuse me, and I had read that too. Where that county did the resolutions, they, you know, they would not enforce the ordinance. Is that something? That our county is open to?
I think that that would be um something that, if, if we can get something from planning and zoning passed up to us. I think that that would be done at, at our level on wording that so that. Possibly keeping somebody from suing us, right?
Right. Yeah, I think that would be doable.
And if, and if P and Z would take it on and and figure out a distance, that way it gives us a direction. On, on how to handle it, and then I think also, if you're gonna be meeting with hours in Cooney this, this week, is maybe touch base with them on. Opinions there from our legal counsel there, cause they originally told us to hold off.
Yeah.
On this, yes.
Yeah, that was a month ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Pardon me?
How many counties are in that group?
Seven.
Well, that'd be great if you could get all of them to agree, uh something like that, so that, yeah, it's technically isn't gonna bother them.
Right.
Do you have copies of Shelby County's?
I do.
Different ordinances, cause they know there's several.
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe something, you know, if you go to the P and Z meeting and and, you know, during their open forum or that, just kind of, they can't make a decision that night, cause it's not a decision on their agenda. But you can kind of inform them what you're looking at, and then they could actually, if they decide to move forward, they could set another meeting, so it doesn't, it's not like it's gonna take months.
Yeah.
I mean, it can move rather quickly.
That was the intention, was to set, and I have, I have never been to do any of your comprehensive, comprehensive, comprehensive. And we're trying to finish up and three other ordinances as well.
And I think that, I think with the meeting, the attorneys this week at one Wednesday will give us a little bit more information also.
When is your next meeting?
This Thursday.
Where?
This Thursday, five thirty at the Wright County Engineers Office. We have a uh zoning, pre-zoning request, and then we're gonna go into our, our meeting or discussion on three other ordinances.
Do you zoom those or?
Yep, I do have it, yep. I have the zoom monitor this meeting.
The distance ought to be. With, with the CEO Cornell P moved their office from Goldfield. That, that castle, we go bro. He get away from pipeline.
He actually moved closer to the pipeline.
Yeah.
But he moved, yeah, moved away from all the.
I understand.
All the stuff above ground.
Right, but it's close to Eagle Grove, so it's right next to Eagle.
Actually, the distance is pretty darned close. And, and you can't tell from the map where, where the pipeline connects in Eagle, yeah, Cornell Peak. You know, it just kinda.
Bobby, you have anything else for us?
No, I'm, I'm done, great discussion.
I just have one. Mark Swan, farm landlord in Wright County, my sister, Ramona Jean Ritter, just touching on what Bob was talking about. That Summit has over seventy-eight thousand dollars in unpaid bills in seven counties. Summit claims to be bringing a benefit, but again, some actions don't match its words. And I've just got a breakdown of what each county is owned, and you guys already know, I'm just trying to stress that, you know, the summit. It's a different animal, we can't trust them, that's my main thing right now.
Thank you.
Or, yeah, ask me to try to speak about the, it's in there, Mississippi, a little bit, um there are wells. And if you go out to the stock or up in the artesian well, it's just fairly trick on out. So water is an issue, obviously, we all know it, it's gonna be a bigger issue if we. Get this set, and there's gonna be a lot of people aren't gonna have water, including townhomes and a lot of southwest of iron. And that's gonna affect us included, so um if you've got something to think about, you know, and there's gonna be more and more. You know, there's people that are losing their water right now, we need help, and you know, that's just the beginning. You know, you look at the forecast and, you know, you have the control of it, but uh, you know, we don't need water. And then they put that thing in, we're really not gonna have any water, it's gonna kill our count, is what it's gonna do, yeah. So the ordinances are, the setbacks are pretty important, as you know.
We did receive your petition, we'll put that on file also.
And get uh a copy of that to Jeremy also, so that he can show his board.
And um Courtney just text Amanda, and she said that we did get a check from Summit today, it finally came, so. Courtney, can you tell me how much it was? Let's see if she's on, see if she's online. Courtney, can you hear us?
Oh, one moment. You're.
Okay.
Perfect, they're Clinton thousand four forty-seven.
Well, I appreciate everybody's input. And uh, well, it looks like we're gonna move, move forward on, on something here, so. With that, anything else to address the board?
I think right is gonna win, cause there's too many things going against it.
But I just, I can't see how it can go through, I just can't.
I know, I hope you're right, but I wanted to, like I said, we've seen too many things. I'm willing to believe that right is right, that's tough, it's.
Understood.
Well, I should say something, there's a lot of firefighters and EMS that signed the petition, they don't want it either.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, if we, we had a, a little more time, maybe we'll. There's, the first time I asked the, the fire chief in Dallas, uh. About pipeline, he says, what are you talking about? He says, well, they, tell us they contacted all you people, I've never seen anybody, I don't even know what you're talking about, so.
But it's evolved since then, I mean, that was almost three years ago.
Right.
We could have had a heck of a lot more signatures, but we agreed to be respectful of you guys and keep it in Wright County, otherwise.
Appreciate that.
We would have had a lot more signatures, I'll guarantee that. So, so we would agree to keep it in, in Wright County.
Good, we appreciate that.
Feel like we need to get things. I U V, I think, could come down anytime, I think, with the decision. So, in my.
I mean, not speaking for the whole board, I don't think you have disagreement with the board here, I mean, I think we're, we're, I think there's, there's a, there's an avenue there. This will put it through our channel, we don't wanna, you know, P and Z is there for a reason, you don't wanna just. You know, govern from here, when you have an apartment that's supposed to be doing things like that, cause they are an important part of the, the procedure.
It's just that we've been saying the same thing for months and not never seen any action, so.
And maybe we'll get some more clarity uh when he meets with the attorneys also on, on that side too, that we'll be, update next Monday with also.
You're doing that this Wednesday?
The Wednesday, Dean, you have the meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's uh, we'll be down at ISAC on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and.
Yeah, last time we met with, you know, the counties were there also.
Yep. So, uh Steve Kinkle, who I'm sure you're, no, Steve Kinkle from, he's a supervisor for Shelby County.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to update on pipeline?
I'll be meeting with him.
Yeah, we, yeah, update on that one, we'll put that on the agenda for next week, update on the pipeline, hope we learned.
Nine fifteen.
Yep, then maybe we'll have an update uh from P and Z and what, what their procedures, what they're thinking too, so then we can get it moving forward. Anything else for the board? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, sorry.
All in favor? For adjourn, thank you all.